Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Fairfield Township Butler County Community Improvement Corporation Quarterly Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, 7:00 PM. I could have a roll call.
Mrs. Vanderhar, President. Mr. Goins.
President.
Ms. Schultz here. Mr. Birding.
President.
Mrs. Harkemeyer. Mr. McAbey. Mr. Oler. Mr. Philpott, absent.
We all can rise for the pledge.
To the light of the United States of America, this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's get into it. So the first item of new business are just a couple of updates. First, I'll just go through some property updates. I provided a map for everybody to look at.
Do we need to approve the minutes first?
Oh, sure. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the March 14th, 2023 meeting?
Second.
Mrs. Vanderhar, yes. Mr. Goins.
Yes.
Ms. Schultz, yes. Mr. Birding.
Yes.
Mrs. Harkemeyer.
Yes.
Mr. McAbey.
Yes.
Mr. Oler.
Yes.
All right, so back to that map I referenced moments ago. Some property updates on that. Twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-one, twenty-five, Parklow Avenue. Habitat for Humanity is in the permitting process for new single-family houses for both of those lots. The Pocket Park at 2038 Milton Street. We were awarded a grant for the construction of a playground. We actually being the township for that project. But final delivery of equipment is scheduled for the end of the month. Installation equipment should start by mid-October. Milton and Exeter Properties, we have nine lots that we completed demolition and site remediation earlier this year. These parcels are ready to be transferred to the CIC from the Land Bank this evening. We have a motion on the agenda. An update for Neighborhood Housing Services of Hamilton. NHS came in and talked to us, I think it was in March, maybe even before then. They have submitted a grant to Butler County to build a couple houses in the township. They're anticipating those funds to be received by Butler County in October or November. And once they receive the funds, NHS plans to sign an agreement and start moving forward on construction of single-family houses. And that's all the updates I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a clarification comment on the map.
Yeah.
It appears that numeral one is covered up. Three properties where fifteen is located, covered up by the green circle. That is fifteen, it's not five.
That's correct.
So just the one digit is covered by the circle.
Form, it is, nothing's really on there that you weren't aware of already. The money we received from the library, which we'll talk about later. Property taxes, insurance, and a small bank charge, some auditing fees. So, once we move the balance tonight, then our balance will be back down to where it was. Otherwise, there's nothing out of the ordinary.
All right, this is the period for public comments on the CIC board. No one signed up for comments? All right, so. So I'd like a motion to accept the transfer of the nine parcels associated with 2025 Milton Street, 2012 Exeter Street, 2026 Exeter Street, and 2030 Exeter Street from the Butler County Land Bank to the CIC.
Four addresses for the nine parcel.
That's correct. A lot of those addresses, a lot of the parcels are just parcel, I believe. But they were tied to those neighboring addresses.
If my resident has actually four parcels of one address.
Yeah.
Weird, but true. So it's not unusual to have multiple parcels on one address.
Mrs. Vanderhar, yes. Mr. Goins.
Yes.
Ms. Schultz, yes. Mr. Birding.
Yes.
Mrs. Harkemeyer. Mr. McAbey.
Yes.
Mr. Oler.
All right, so for Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero one. Resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to transfer money from the CIC account for the sale of the Lane Library land to the Fairfield Township General Fund in the amount of $675,000.
Questions for that?
Mr. Goins.
Yes.
Mrs.
Want to talk about this?
Sure.
Maybe you want to explain to the public what?
Sure, yeah, so this is, the CIC got funds when they sold the property to the Lane Public Library. This is 7.23 acres, located on Hamilton Mason Road, not too far from the Hamilton Mason Gilmore Road intersection.
Right, that's part of the parcel that we had purchased, the township had purchased. That little tract and separate storage for it, we've got three, right? And then we built two buildings on it. Sold us, that leaves us with three acres, I think, three acres for sale.
Just a little over three acres, that's right. Yeah, and then I guess, what was it, fifteen to twenty acres was sold to the Fairfield City School District.
Thirty-two acres.
Thirty-two.
It's a good use for that property. I think a lot of people are going to be excited to have that library come into the township.
Yeah, I agree.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Mrs. Vanderhar, yes. Mr. Goins.
Yes.
Ms. Schultz, yes. Mr. Birding.
Yes.
Mrs. Harkemeyer.
Yes.
Mr. McAbey.
Yes.
Mr. Oler.
Are there any board comments?
I just would just like to clarify Mr. McAbey's point. Our next meeting will be at 6:30, or do we have to just set the time?
It looks like the minutes stated that we were planning on 6:30 meetings moving forward, so. But we did advertise for a seven o'clock meeting. And the agenda was for seven, but I think as a board, we did decide moving forward, we can hold them at 6:30.
The minutes reflect that it's September 12th, there's September 12th meetings, we said it's 6:30.
Okay.
And we did that because the last meeting, we had a lot of work to do, and we didn't start till seven, and that took a little bit of time.
I'm just looking for clarification, that's great.
So yeah, we'll make sure, 6:30.
Okay.
For the next meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Land Bank, do they have any more of our property?
I don't believe so. I think this is the last group of parcels that they have. Anything else? No need for executive session. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Vanderhar, yes. Mr. Goins.
Yes.
Ms. Schultz, yes. Mr. Birding.
Yes.
Mrs. Harkemeyer.
Yes.
Mr. McAbey.
Yes.
Mr. Oler.
Yes.
Seven oh nine.
Seven oh nine.
Thanks, Mike. Pretty easy board to sit on, isn't it?
Unusual, not used to it, nine minutes.
Sometimes there's more to talk about.
I think the bar chief. Good job, Joe. Hey, appreciate it. Back to the non-presidential.
Are you standing in your non-press place?
Yeah, I've already changed my identity. All about that respect, buddy. I didn't do this. It's okay. I just said, well, it's old. That'd be a brother, right?
Good evening. It is still Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. It's about 7:12 PM. And that call is Fairfield Township Trustee Board Meeting to Order. Ms. Schultz, we follow the rule, please.
Trustee Birding.
President.
Trustee Harkemeyer.
Here.
Trustee McAbey.
Here.
Okay, we already had the pledge, so we'll just move right into presentations. Do we have any presentations?
When do you plan to do, you plan to do your shock at the appropriate time, at the public hearing?
There's not a public hearing.
Yeah, I got, yeah, correct, it's not a public hearing, sorry.
Or just wait.
Other than that, no.
Okay, no old business. Items for board discussion, temporary property taxes, side millage reduction. Do you want to handle that, Mr. Goins, or do you want to handle that decision?
Okay. So, as I think you're all aware, we did get an email from the county auditor's office asking us to keep our property tax collection for inside millage the same as last year. So if you looked at the worksheet, we collected, I'm just going to round numbers, 160,000 last year. The values were somewhere around 582 million, and that made the inside millage the 29%. If we collect the same this year, with the values going up to like, I think it was like 772 million, it would take us eight percent reduction to still collect the same. So the auditor's office was asking us to consider and making, getting a motion together, collecting the same as we did last year in order to give the residents a break for that huge increase they're taking. A few things. As Fairfield, we, since the schools have not hit the 20 mil floor, it's a very small increase that we're taking, especially compared to other townships. So the point is that if we want to do it, it would be more for all the townships joining in, all the cities, all the villages, the county, the schools, everyone, to give this tax break. After talking to other fiscal officers, even though ours is small and we probably could do it with no problem, some of the other townships cannot, and they don't plan to, because it's more of a burden on them. Their taxes got raised higher, and it's just too much of a burden. I also talked to the schools, and although the board hasn't made an official decision, it doesn't sound like the schools can afford to. And I do know the commissioners of the county knocked it down too. So the county won't even be doing it. So, it is your decision as a board if you would like to waive the increase in inside millage for our residents. If we do, we need a resolution to go to the county. I just want to give you all the information to make that decision collectively. So we can do it even if no one else does, but I'm just giving you the idea that I don't think many other people will be able to. Any questions?
You said we received an email.
Yes.
Asking us to do it. Where is this information you're talking about? Is it in here?
Um, no. Julie sent the email to you maybe a week ago-ish.
I'd like to see it in printed form.
Okay. I do, yeah. Want me to print it right now?
Well. Yes.
Yes.
I'm not ready to vote until I.
So while you're printing that, I'll just make some comments.
Okay.
It's okay. It is a small amount. It's not going to save our residents very much money. Because it's only on the inside millage, it's not on anything that's been voted on. So, it's not going to affect the safety services levy. That's still going to have the increase. It won't affect the libraries, all the other people that, all the other entities that get tax dollars from our residents, it's not going to affect those rates. So it's only on the inside millage that we have. It's very minimal for household. But I still feel like if we have the opportunity, it's a one-time, it's a one-year hold on the increase on the inside millage. I don't know what the other townships are. Ms. Schultz says that they all have indicated to her that they're probably going to not give their residents, not their citizens, not that one-time break, that they're going to go ahead and just pass the increase along. It's my opinion, it's not going to hurt us as a township very much. And as a show of good faith, we could pass it on to the citizens and give them a break. Again, it's very minimal what it's going to save, according to the spreadsheet that we got. And I asked Ms. Schultz questions about the spreadsheet. Thank you.
So, the first page kind of gives you a narrative of what they're asking for and explains the spreadsheet. Pretty much explains the bottom line number. So, basically, it was a 29%.
For, so based on, from value to what we collected was for inside millage last year was 29%. If we increase the value and collect 21% this year, we'll collect the same as last year. So they're asking us to basically reduce eight percent of the inside millage for one year only. Just to make that clear, it's for one year only. But like Mr. Birding said, it's very small dollars, because it's just inside millage. It won't affect the voted, it's non-voted, basically. So it won't affect any of the voted. It's not going to affect anything else but inside millage.
So it does save our residents a total of $61,741. Again, you spread that out amongst all of our residents, it's not a lot. But, you know, we have hard discussions about whether we're going to spend $61,000 on items. So it is a way of saving the township 61, well, saving the taxpayer $61,000 and change. That's just my opinion, I think they have to know by the end of the month. Is that correct?
Um, you know, let me see, I don't know if he gave a, did he give a hard date? It just said that if we're going to do it, we'll need a resolution from your trustees. We have filed an extension with the state to allow submit amounts and rates to you by October 1st. So yes, I would say, yes, it needs to be done this meeting if we're going to do it.
I really liked the materials that you prepared. This is a very thorough analysis. I'm of the mind to, in good faith, to give the taxpayers the wave on this one. I think that it's not a huge amount, but I think I'd like to give that to our citizens.
Mine's just the one year. Why is it we can do it this year, but can't do it any other year?
Well, it's not that we can't, that's all they're asking us for, is one year.
We could decide on our own what we want to collect.
Yes. I believe that's the case any year. You could decide to collect less, I'm guessing, but they're only asking us for one year.
You're only suggesting. I want to hear somewhere it says what we collected, I know you said the number. Can you take me through that again?
Sure.
Did we collect last year?
Let me open.
On our inside millage, which goes to the general fund, road and bridge, really, right?
Yes.
Just the general fund.
So, last year, our total value, this is residential, commercial, agricultural, was 582 million. So based on the rates for each of those sections, it comes out to a total rate of 2.9%. So we collected 168,990. And just for the record, I'm not including the rollbacks right now. So $168,000 for inside millage. If we collect this year, 162, so basically, they came to the most rounded number to get as close as they could to last year's and still have a percent in whole dollars, it would be 21%. And the values have went from 582 million to 771 million. So at 21%, we will collect 162,070 compared to 168,990. So basically the same, and that would be the 21%. So they're asking for an eight percent millage reduction, which would save the taxpayer $61,741.
And how would that be shared by all the taxpayers?
Well, it is $2.80 per hundred thousand value of house. So depending on what size your house is, is how that would be distributed. For the record, the reason the schools can't do it, really because they're not just asking, when they're asking for something like this with the schools, it also affects our state funding, because their state funding's based on value. So if you reduce the taxes, it makes it look like we're more rich. Is that right, we're more rich, basically? So then the state gives the less money. So it would not just be this that they would have to take the hit on. They would also have to take hit on state funding, and no one knows exactly how much that is. So I don't think the schools are going to be willing to take that gamble. As we all know, the schools are already, you know, needing them every dime they get. So that's why, I do know that some townships are considering doing it, but not the road and bridge portion, because they need their money for paving, and they can't give it up. So, I think each township has different reasons if they will or won't, and how much they will. But we could do a portion of it too, if we'd like. Although, like I said, ours is very small dollars, and, you know, we're in a better position than some people. So we're fortunate that way. But, you know, anything we can do to save our taxpayers, you know, I'm in favor of.
You don't get to vote on it.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, you're a property tax owner.
I am, right, so of course I'm in favor.
So what, if we don't do anything, what's our, what is our, how much money are we going to get next year? We just got settlement, right?
Right.
First half or whatever?
Second half settlement, yes. The new rates have not come out yet, so we don't know exactly. But, and I don't know besides inside millage, but we would get 178,000. Let's see, that's with the 162. So I don't know, I'd have to do the 29% instead of 21%. I don't know exactly offhand, but it would be the 29%, assuming it was the same as last year with the new values, though.
I mean, our fire and EMS and police, they only raise a certain amount of money.
Right.
Right? So they're not, we're not getting any extra taxes on that. Right?
Right, just inside millage, yeah.
Right, so we get the same amount of money. Different people may pay different amounts, but as far as the total cost of those levies, it only generates the same amount of money, if I remember right.
Right.
So, and I know today, there was a clip on the front page of the Journal that said that you could go on to the auditor's website and see your projected taxes for next year.
Oh, I didn't know so, okay.
I didn't try it, because didn't get to it. But, so I understand that people could do that and see how much, how big a shock it is. See if it's as bad as we thought it was, or not as bad because of the school inside, the school millage not being, and if we do this or not.
I think our values went up, I think I calculate this, but I'm just double-checking, but our values went up 32%, and I think the.
That's the 582,771.
Right, so our values went up 32%, and some districts went up as much as 42%. So again, it's not quite a big of hit for us as some districts.
So we need a resolution or a motion? We're going to meet again before the end of the month, right, Mr. Birding?
I don't have plans to meet again.
Oh, you don't? I thought we were going to be dealing with the fire chief issue and working our way through it, but maybe we aren't.
Well, I mean, that's, that would be, that would be a.
I mean, if we need to have a resolution, we could just wait and do it between now and the end of the month. Otherwise, it sounds like we need to vote on this.
We do need a resolution.
Yeah, I would think that, I mean, if we meet again, it would be an executive session meeting, ready to talk about the fire chief applications.
Might not be the majority of it, but we can still take care of any other business before or after the executive session.
You could call a special meeting to have the executive session, but also to do this resolution if you want.
Or if we have the resolution ready, we can add it to the agenda as well.
I don't think we have a resolution ready for it. Okay, well, we'll just, we'll have a special meeting later in the month, we'll add that to the agenda. Any other questions? Okay. Next item is communication. Do we have anybody signed up?
No.
Okay, we'll move into committee reports. TID, trustee McAbey.
TID met this week. There was very little action taken, we just received updates again. Probably the biggest point made was it's probably a year out before we have a selected route for the North Hamilton Crossing. It seems like we're down three. One goes across the Bonham Farm, one that goes through Joe Nussall Park, and then the third one, which has surfaced here in the last 60 days or 90 days or so, is going to go south of that. But that's, we've started that next process of investigating those three, to determine what a preferred route would be. Again, they're talking about a year. Milton Road Interchange is moving along, same thing there. We had a nice presentation on that, and it'll be big for Butler County, big for Southwest Ohio. Get that done, and it is moving, so I suspect we will. A newer project that we're working on is the Sims Road Railroad in Fairfield. We're looking at going under or over and fixing that long-time problem that we had there on Sims Road. So that's a movement that we're dealing with. We meet again in October.
That's usually like first Monday of the month, is it?
Second, second Monday of the month.
Sunday, Monday.
8:30.
And usually at the engineer's office, correct?
Yes. We'll, we'll meet in October. I don't know about December, uh, November, then December. We used to do it a little bit earlier and, and do it downtown a break.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, EMA, OKI, Clout, trustee Harkemeyer.
All right. Just attended the EMA meeting this afternoon. Uh, this was the first meeting with the director, Jim Boland, in charge. He's been in the transitioning phase, and he is now running the show over there. Um, a few key things. They have been focusing on some outreach events. They have attended coffee with council in Hamilton, uh, some Kiwanis meetings. They gave quite a bit of support at the fair. So that's one of the things that they're working on is outreach and, uh, interacting with the community. They were on hand to assist at the recent BOA concert, and I guess they'll be assisting, assisting with that the next few years. Uh, there were several incidents. Um, there was one incident where they thought it was a tornado. It was not. Um, but then there was on 8/15, there actually was a EF0 tornado that, uh, that did come down. So that happened. Um, they were on hand to assist as necessary. A few other things. They are working on the hazmat manual rewrite update. It's been approved by the prosecutor's office, and it will be presented at the Fire Chiefs Association meeting next month. So be on the lookout for that. It's gonna be expanding the capacity for hazmat. Um, let's see, a few other quick things. Um, there is some additional funding that will be made available. Um, the details are not very complete as of yet. Just found out about this in the last couple of days. I just found out about it today. I forwarded the email to administrator von der Heer and, uh, to Chuck for you to take a look at that. Uh, but apparently there is going to be some additional funding. I'm not real, they weren't really sure what for what areas, but that is available, and more details will be, um, available. I did direct the, I sent the email to you, so you can take a look at that further. Um, they also presented their five-year strategic plan. Um, I would recommend reaching out to, uh, Jim Boland if you have other interest in that. But, uh, I think that they will be doing some good things there at the Butler County EMA moving forward. Uh, OKI, that meeting will be on Thursday, so I'll be heading down to Cincinnati for that. Uh, Clout, nothing to report there.
Any questions for trustee Harkemeyer? Okay, thank you very much. Fiscal officers' recommendations or reports, Ms. Schultz?
The only thing I have is that we did get our second half tax settlement. $4,66,177 came in and got posted today, so you'll see that in your September reports.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz? I just wanna comment. Thank you for the great job on that, uh, understanding what the auditor is asking for us. So, uh, it'd be interesting to see what the rest of the townships do. Okay, uh, item, the second item is recommend a motion to suspend the reading in the minutes for the following meetings. Regular trustee meeting August 8th and the regular trustee, special meeting August 22nd. Is there a motion to suspend the reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes. That motion passes.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes. That motion passes. Next item is recommend motion to approve payment of the bills by the fiscal office. I move to approve payment of the bills.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
That motion passes. Administrator's report. Ms. Von der Heer?
Thank you. So we've had a lot going on the last two weeks, and that started with the Veterans Memorial John Carboy Classic Golf Outing. And Fred Valerius did give me an update. 60 golfers netted about $6,000. So that was very successful. Diane and I were there the entire day, helped with the registration. And I know they appreciated. I think all of you had sponsored, uh, uh, tea, had some of the employees. And, I don't know, it was a great day. A lot of fun, a lot of good people. And we did have, um, police, police group golfing. So I think they came in second to last. Sorry. I might, I might have made that up. I don't know. Okay, so that was, uh, that Fred Valerius gave me a, via text, a Veterans Memorial update. Said that the images on the benches have been finalized, and sandblasting the bench titles on front and the engraving of the images will begin soon. Their hope is that they will be installed by Veteran, by, by the Veterans Day program. Yep, so, uh, there is not enough room between the backs of the benches and the landscaping to place a sponsor name so they are easily visible. So they said they'd be happy to walk the board through that. And last, the Culligan Fund Committee took no action on their, at their August meeting. They don't meet again until Ne- November, so they may need a bridge loan from the CIC to pay for the entry monuments if they arrive before them. And other than that, oh, George Brian's, this is really neat. George Brian's from the Vets Committee, and Carl Meyer, who was a sponsor of the Vietnam War Ben, uh, Bench, they are on the honor flight to DC and back today, so that should be on the news. So what, that's so neat. I went to the last one for one of our Story Point residents, and it was outstandingly cool. So congrats to them on that. Uh, today we had a health assessment, and we had, thanks to all of you and all your work, we had our largest attendance, and I have never seen that many police, fire, and public works involved. Uh, just awesome. Uh, we had about 50 people, so that was our highest number. Each year we've tried to increase it, and, uh, they all knocked it out of the park this year. So great morning. Um, let's see here. The Saturday event went very well. I, you've all seen the different posts and whatnot. We have a lot of the people that initiated everything here tonight. So thank you to all of them. The staff was absolutely incredible. I've never seen everyone work together, every department with all the equipment, all having fun, all with a common vision, all, it was just, it was incredible, incredible success. Um, just couldn't say enough good things about the staff and volunteers and a lot of wives and spouses gave time. So thank you to everyone on that. We have a blood drive October 10th. More to come on that. Treat Street, October 28th. And we have a firehouse, firehouse open house is October 14th, so more to come. I just sent some information before the meeting. I have a flyer that I will share. Uh, that is all I have at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Von der Heer? Could we possibly get a list of the car show winners at some point? Can we get that shared? Is there a list? That'd be great. Okay. It's a great turnout for cars. It was really cool seeing some of those cars.
So, and Jason Eggeston, he came forward with the idea. And you have a lot of experience with all of those, the car shows and with all the different people and the players. So instrumental, and then things just continued to evolve as, as people came up with other ideas. And so it was really employee and resident and union-driven. It was just really neat.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the only thing the trustees did for the event was we ordered the weather, and then we left the rest of it.
We appreciated that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. Much appreciated. That was good. So thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, um, we'll move into motions. The first item is the, uh, MI Homes. So is there a motion to approve, deny, approve with conditions? I guess we should have, um, before I ask that question, let's have Chuck present on that. Okay.
All right, so this is the, my voice is waning, so this will be brief. Um, so this is the Timber Trails, uh, subdivision. This is for section two, the final PD. Yep. It's going, been going off and on past few hours. Um, so bear with me. May or may not be contagious. All right, so section two is comprised of 31, uh, and a little bit more than that acres. Includes 61 single-family homes. Uh, this is the second final, uh, section. This is the second final section of the, the PUD. A little background, uh, the planning commission approved the preliminary PUD back in June of 2021. The zoning commission reviewed and recommended approval for the preliminary PUD also in June of 2021. Uh, Fairfield Township Board of Trustees, uh, voted to approve the fine point, yep, to approve the preliminary PUD in July 28th of 2021. And then September 2021, the, the trustees approved the final PUD plans for section one of the PUD. It's staff's opinion that the conditions that are placed on the PUD during the zone change and preliminary PUD process have been addressed in the final PUD plan. Uh, staff further believes that the final PUD is consistent with section 615.7 of his, of the township zoning resolution and will promote public health, safety, and the general welfare of the residents of Fairfield Township. And staff recommends approval of the final PUD. That's the short version. Do you guys have any questions?
Any applicant is here, the senior?
Any applicant is here also.
If we have any questions for that. Any questions from the board?
Is it more than two sections? So it's, it's broken up?
It's broken up in just two sections. The phases of construction will be more than that, uh, but it's, it's going through twice. So this is the last time the board will see this.
So how many, how many, uh, units are built already?
I'm not sure how many are constructed, um, at this point. I can look into that, but I don't have that number for that development.
Any other questions? All right.
Motion to adopt, motion to approve.
I second. Any other questions, uh, or comments that, up seconding the approval of Timber Trails section two, asset four, and zoning case FTZ C23-3C, final PUD.
And all the, all the restrictions that are in that.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we, I worked, we worked with, uh, Bayern Becker and MI Homes extensively in advance of the first, uh, supplemental for the final PUD for section one. And we really hashed everything out during those, uh, negotiations, and they, they mentioned that.
Any other questions? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
That motion passes. The next motion is to accept the transfer of $675,000 from the CIC to the general fund 1,000. Second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Resolutions? Ms. Von der Heer?
Resolution number 23-114 to approve open purchase order balances.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes. And that resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-115 authorizing a then-and-now purchase order for Specialty Truck Repair Incorporated for the fire department at a price not to exceed $10,032.61 for maintenance issues occurred with medic 213.
I move to adopt 23-115.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-116 amending the 2023 permanent appropriations.
I move to adopt 23-116.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Somebody wanna explain it on record?
Sure. The, um, we're amending the, um, appropriations for the opioid fund. Um, because when we did the final budget, we did not know the exact amount of money that we were gonna get in. So we did an appropriation for, I think it was 14,000, 'cause that's all the money we had at the time. Since then, we're up to 36,000, um, and, um, Chief Thomas has money to spend, um, in that account, and it has to be used for a certain item or certain items. So I am amending appropriations for that so that we can spend that money. And the second one is gonna come later in the meeting, um, with retention grants for first responders. We had to create new funds for money that we're expecting in and gonna pay out. So I'm amending appropriations for that so that we can pay that out. Any other questions?
That's one for 170,000, 112?
Yep, 110, 112's fire, 60,000's police, and then the other one's the opioid. Which we do, we will still get opioid money, and so I may have to do this again later, but, um, I don't know. Depends on if they spend it.
Putting both, both in the same fund for the fire and police?
Yes, for the retention bonuses, yes. I'm sorry, for the, um, yeah, retention bonuses, yes, first responders. But they'll come in separately.
They'll go out separately.
And they will go out separately, and when we get to that later, it'll explain all that.
Anything else? Okay, Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-117 approving the purchase of robotic education units from Robotronics in the amount of $25,823.60. And this will be paid from the opioid settlement fund 2909.
I move to adopt resolution 23-117.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
So as part of the agreement with the opioid, uh, funds was for educational purposes. And we decided to, uh, look at some training tools. And we have requested to purchase a robotic ambulance that can do public education training. Uh, and similarly, for the police department, a robot police car. Similar to the old fire truck that we had years ago that's no longer serviceable. Uh, we run off of remote controls, and the operator can have a two-way conversation with the participants from a distance, so. And it's in line with the recommendations of the opioid, opioid funds to be used for educational purposes.
And the ambulance?
Yes, sir.
KC and the cruiser?
KC and the cruiser. It's like Sunshine Band, only different.
Any further questions? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-118 approving acceptance of EMA ARPA peer support training grant in the amount of $9,000. training grant in the amount of nine thousand dollars.
Second. Any questions or comments?
This was a EMA grant that was for peer support training. It's part of the mental health initiative from the governor's office, and we were ordered funds to hold a class, which we have scheduled for December twelfth and thirteenth, I believe it is.
Correct, that's correct.
Which is going to be presented by the International Association of Firefighters, and the cost of that program is nine thousand dollars.
How many people will go through that class?
I think they limited the class to thirty. So there will be two instructors from the international here to teach the class, and we've opened it to our full-time staff first, and then if there are still additional seats available, which there will be, we will open that up to the other regional fire department locals to participate as well.
Any other questions? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash one nineteen approving acceptance of EMA ARPA retention slash incentive program grant in the amount of one hundred, ten thousand, one hundred twelve dollars. And this is for the Fire Department. Police has a separate resolution, but this state grant was, we, Captain Schu, or it was Assistant Chief Schuman applied, and this was a one-time retention incentive bonus for first responders based on all the operations during COVID-19.
Let's go adopt.
Second. Any questions or comments?
How would it be broke down?
So, should be a spreadsheet that's attached as part of this that spells out the, there was a specific timeframe, and it was salary-based, up to ten percent, with a max of four thousand dollars. So anybody that made more than forty thousand dollars during the time period was limited to four thousand dollars, and then if you made less than that, you got ten percent. And it was similar for the police department. They worked the formula to make sure that everybody that submitted got funded. So they, originally it was going to be a flat ten percent, and they realized that that was going to drain the money before they could fund all the departments that applied, so they changed the formula.
You had to be employed or something, June first of some year or something like that?
You had to be employed during the timeframe, which was in twenty-two, and you have to be a current employee still to be eligible, so.
So a new hire that wasn't working here on that date?
Does not get anything.
And wouldn't get it from his old place either, or his new place?
No, if you are no longer employed by the agency that submitted the grant application, you are no longer eligible. And we have three, and I have to get clarification on an individual who just resigned last month. He may not be eligible any further, so I'll clarify that before we make that last disbursement decision.
And all these add up to that same number, ten thousand?
That's correct. And then the ones that we have that are not eligible, that money will have to be returned to the state. So currently, there's three people on that list who do not work here. The fourth one quit after we submitted the approval documentation, so I have to get a ruling from the state whether that individual is still qualified as of the date we submitted or if he's no longer eligible, so. And I would just like to thank Assistant Chief Schuman for all the hard work, for both the peer support and for the retention grant application. There was a lot of work that went into that, and I appreciate his efforts.
He's one of those three, you know?
That's correct.
Any further questions or comments? All right, Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash one twenty approving acceptance of EMA ARPA retention slash incentive program grant in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. So this is the portion for the police department.
I move to adopt twenty-three dash one two zero.
Second.
I'm assuming it's just the same thing, it's just for the police department? Okay.
Everybody, did everybody get money to qualify?
Yes, we got two that were not.
Any other questions?
That adds up to the sixty and four, that's what I said.
Yes.
Four thousand.
I think there was only one, Chief Schuman. Yes, there was one.
One ineligible for that four thousand.
So when the money comes in, we have thirty days to pay it, so I'll pay it through payroll in thirty days after we get the money. So we're just waiting for the money now, should be any day, I think.
That'd be a special check?
It will be a separate check, yes, and taxes only, no other deductions.
No tax?
No, no person, right? Yes, no person.
What, where was this funded on it?
It was funded through the governor's office with the State of Ohio ARPA funds.
Any other questions? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash one twenty-one authorizing the appointment of part-time firefighter EMT Gerald Brown to the Fairfield Township Fire Department at an hourly rate of eighteen dollars and fifty cents with a twelve-month probationary period.
Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, I missed that. Who motioned?
Trustee McAfee first.
Okay. Okay. Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash one twenty-two authorizing the appointment of part-time firefighter EMT Chase Lydel to the Fairfield Township Fire Department at an hourly rate of eighteen dollars and fifty cents with a twelve-month probationary period.
The next, no, what's the next one? Isn't it Matthew Miller? I'm sorry.
No?
Nope, I'm sorry, that was my error. I was out of order there.
Second. Okay, so that, the resolution was for twenty-three dash one twenty-two, just to clarify.
Sorry, that was my bad.
Okay. And Mr. McAfee, Trustee McAfee motioned, and I second it.
Okay, Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. Now, Mrs., Trustee Harkemeyer, would like the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three one twenty-three authorizing the appointment of part-time firefighter EMT Matthew Miller, so much easier, to the Fairfield Township Fire Department at an hourly rate of eighteen dollars and fifty cents with a twelve-month probationary period.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Any questions or comments? I assume this is not the former Lakota superintendent?
It's not the former superintendent, nor is it the sergeant at the police department, and you probably want to attach his middle initial to everything.
Okay, is it the restaurant guy? Okay.
That's Matt D. Miller.
Oh, boy, that'll go home.
Any questions or comments other than that? Any serious questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Schultz, will you have the roll, please?
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash one twenty-four to disperse three hundred and sixty-two hundred, five hundred, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, thirty-three hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the tax increment financing funds number twenty-nine oh four, twenty-nine oh six, and twenty-nine oh eight for distribution of the TIF monies collected to the Fairfield City School District, and this is the twenty-five percent, little bit different percent on some of the other properties, but this came as a result of the second tax settlement.
The, before we, well.
Yeah.
The agenda does not match the resolution, so I'm glad that you read the resolution, because the resolution amount is the three sixty-two, five thirty-three, and twenty-seven.
And that's the correct amount. I checked it.
But the agenda does not reflect that.
Right.
So, we have to amend the agenda? I would amend the agenda to change the number. So let's, we need a motion to amend the agenda.
Sure. I move to amend the agenda so that the resolution twenty-three dash one twenty-four has the correct amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, thirty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents from the TIF funds for distribution to the Fairfield City School District.
Second. And that is the correct amount?
Yes, I checked it.
Okay, we have a first and second motion to amend the agenda. Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll for that item?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
And that motion to amend the agenda passes. We now have a rereading of the resolution, but we did not have a first and second.
The reading was the same.
Yeah, the reading was good.
It was done correctly.
Okay.
So a motion to adopt.
So I move to adopt twenty-three dash one twenty-four as it was read.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is our normal payment based on, as the resolution said, we paid to the school district.
Okay, Mr., Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Resolution is adopted. May we have the final resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three one twenty-five declaring nuisance and ordering abatement on the properties listed below and further authorizing the zoning administrator to initiate complaint. Properties include thirty-nine oh three Terror Way for RV parking, twenty-nine twenty-nine Creekside Drive for trailer parking, junk, and vegetation, sixty-four thirty-one Canostota Drive for vegetation, fourteen forty-six Exeter Drive for pool sanitation and vegetation, nineteen twenty-seven Parkamo Avenue for junk objectionable, noxious, or dangerous uses, practices, or conditions, twenty-nine oh eight Creekside Drive, R1 permitted use, Airbnb, one forty-one Fair Grove Avenue, junk, and operable vehicles and vegetation, sixty-zero-nine Liberty Fairfield Road for vehicle parking, seventy-three zero-nine Clarion Court for junk, debris, vegetation, and Stevens Place, which is a Speedway for high grass and vegetation.
Second.
Which speed were you at?
Uh, one oh.
Nick was busy.
Yes, Nick got a lot of time, didn't he?
That's what I was thinking.
Nobody's applying this one.
Okay. Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. Announcements, we have a cruise-in September, Thursday, September fourteenth, at six to seven-thirty PM at Story Point Senior Living Center. There's a Walker's Club on Tuesdays and Thursdays, September fifth through October fifth, from eight-thirty AM to ten AM at Bridge Rock Falls. Our next Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting is Tuesday, October tenth, twenty-twenty-three, at seven PM. Board member comments? Mr. McAfee?
None tonight, thanks.
Ms. Harkemeyer?
I want to thank everyone who participated in the health screening today. That's really important because that helps to keep our healthcare costs down. I think every year that we've participated in the Go365 program in conjunction with that, we've gotten money back from that, which helps us to keep our prices down, so that's a really good thing. I attended the event on Saturday night, and it was fantastic. I was super proud of our team. There was just fantastic synergy between all of our departments in executing and getting that done. I received a lot of positive comments from the public. The car show was fabulously attended. I think I heard the stats were that usually on a first-time car show, you may get fifty people, and I think we had a hundred and eighteen people, something like that there. So thank you for bringing that idea forward and executing upon that. It was, it was wonderful. I attended the debriefing today with staff on that, and they came up with some really good improvement ideas for next year to make it bigger and better. Again, I'm just incredibly pleased with what happened. I think, oh, a couple of things, I think it's going to be, I heard September seventh is the date for that, and it's going to be Patriot Weekend, Patriot Day in Fairfield Township. That's brilliant. And I think that I heard there was going to be some things with the nine-eleven steal, perhaps, to bring that out. I think that's a wonderful thing for us to bring into our community to have that remembrance going forward, so, well done. Very proud of all of you. Fantastic.
Yeah, I also attended.
Oh, wait, one other thing, can I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, your time is a lot.
I forgot this part. I was so happy to look out across the venue and to see all of the kids playing at the park. It was just, you know, the parents were listening to the music, the kids were playing, and multiple times I saw people walking over and looking at the memorial. I saw a grandmother, I'm assuming it was a grandmother with a very small young man, and they were walking over and pointing at the memorial, and he was touching it, and it was just a very poignant moment to see that. And I think that was kind of the vision of the park for all these years, to have that sort of cohesive venue where there were all of those good things happening together. Okay, I'm done now. Maybe.
I'm just waiting. Yes, I also took part in the event. It was great. We walked around, I couldn't believe how many cars were there. I figured it'd take me about a half an hour, it's like two hours to see all the cars. It was amazing. And, yeah, from the Parks Department, I'm sorry, the Plug Works Department, like going around all the time, making sure the trash was picked up and the place was looking good, all the setup that they did to be prepared for it. I had heard lots of comments from residents that were there that they felt very secure. We had a lot of police there directing traffic from our auxiliary parking lot at Butler Tech to come across the street. And just, I want to thank, you know, our firefighters for what they did to set it up, run it. Thank you for the awesome love. It's great. Love it. Also, the band was really good. It was awesome. Unfortunately, when I was thanking people, I failed to mention Julie or Tori Von Dehar, whoever Tori is, that's what the lady up on stage, the singer, thanking Tori. But Julie and Chuck and the entire staff here in the office did an amazing job of setting up, working the event, and so I do want to thank them publicly because I failed to on stage, so I apologize for that. And of course, our volunteers that were there, the Fire Corps, CPAA, I'm assuming had people there as well, running the bounce houses and the various things. So it was, it was a great event. Hopefully, next year, we can get more vendors there. I think that was something that, once the word gets out, that more and more vendors show up and more cars, and I'm looking forward to it. I guess, I'm assuming it's centered around September eleventh, which is Patriots' Day, and we're going to have that celebration every year around September eleventh, so whenever the weekend is around that, we're going to try to have that. And so I think that's a great idea to tie that into that event as well. So thank you all that were involved with that. Oh, one more comment. I noticed, I usually don't like to peruse Facebook Township residents, but there was a comment about a gentleman whose truck broke down in a Walmart parking lot, and some residents were asking people for help. This poor gentleman was in a truck, and he had been there for a few days. His truck broke down, and some-
His truck broke down, and someone mentioned, I think it's, he'd mentioned it was his starter, so someone asked, is there a mechanic out there that can help? And someone went out and bought him a new starter, a mechanic came in and installed it, got his truck running. Turns out that it was a homeless person, and he was living in that truck. And so he also needed medical attention, so they took him to the hospital. Some residents bought him new clothes because his clothes were ratted and torn and soiled. And I'm just very proud of our community for coming together and taking care of someone in need. I don't know his condition now, but I don't know if he's still in the hospital, but he is, he's battling some serious illnesses, and I just want to thank all the residents that took part in that to take care of one of our own. Very much appreciated. Thank you for that. And they didn't complain about all the tire stores, so it's okay.
It's how we do things in Fairfield Township.
Okay, according to O R C one twenty-one point twenty-two G one, to consider the employment or compensation of a public employer official, we need to move into executive session. Is there a motion to convene an executive session?
So moved.
I do, there may or may not be action to follow executive session. So Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that motion is adopted, and we convene executive session at eight, ten PM. Thanks, Jeff.